Good evening. This is the zoning board of appeals. I am Janice Tatarca. I am joined by Joan Cromwell, Joseph Mahoney, Marilyn Vega Torres, John De Priest, Will Checho, and Hector Velez. And the first case in front of us today is going to be 2024-2457 Palmer. We're going to be listening to that in concert with 2024-25, which is 75 Palmer, but we will be citing them separately. So could you update us again on, make sure you talk into the microphone when you speak, please introduce yourself and also just give us a quick summary again of what you're proposing.
Sure. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher. I'm one of the principals of 686 Architects. The proposal before you tonight is for the easement and parking between 75 and 57 Palmer. Recently, 57 Palmer was approved to have a two-unit building constructed on it. This parking and easement was part of that original application, and I forget why we removed it as we were going through the original process. And now, as we're going through the closeout, we are here just to seek the relief for the parking in the side yard of both lots.
Okay. Any questions before I open it up to the public? Okay, this is still a public hearing. Does anybody have an interest in speaking on this case? If not, I will close the public participation portion of this. John, does the planning department have thoughts or a recommendation?
Well, the planning board recommended approval with standing conditions and using permeable pavers for pavement, which the, actually, the applicant was going to use anyway. The planning department is in favor of approval of the both cases.
Okay. So we're gonna, but as I said, we'll take each case separately. And again, I'm going to read it for the record. It's for a special permit seeking, this is for 57 Palmer Street, case 2024-24, for a special permit seeking approval for the approval of a driveway opening permit, which is not permitted within the required front yard setback, nor within five feet of a side lot line, nor within five feet of a wall containing windows. Do I have a motion on this? Marilyn?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve case number 2024-2475 Palmer Street with the standard conditions.
And the permeable pavers.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're okay with the permeable pavers, I assume?
Of course, yes.
Now, we're going to talk 2024-2557 Palmer Street and what I said earlier, the same exact thing. Do I have a motion on this?
I make a motion that the case be approved with the conditions.
As applicable and permeable pavers?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You're done.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and assistance.
It'll take a while to get written up, and so talk to the department about timing.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next case in front of us is 2025-018284 Marlborough Street. John, when we were at a last meeting, I believe there was something that we had received in writing that did not get read into the record. Do we, or am I misremembering?
No, you're correct. There was a, well, we actually went to the planning board. There was a letter from Counselor Senegate in opposition to...
I know she said a letter. I thought that we had, I know that she spoke in front of us that day. I thought there was a letter, but I could, I, I could be clearly wrong.
Let me check, let me check the files.
Okay.
We did receive a letter, someone opposing the project due to the parking, I believe.
Okay. I just want to see if we, do you have a copy of that, Will? I want to read it into the record. I just want to know who it came from.
Not on me, but it should be in the flash drive.
I don't have it.
Okay.
I can run down and grab it.
Well, we're going to assume that at this point, there was a letter that should have been read into the record, and it's my error that it wasn't, that was an objection based on the parking concerns raised by your proposal. So that being said, why, and John, what did the planning depart, planning board say about this?
Planning board recommended approval with conditions that you see on your draft list.
Okay, so before I read to those, so could you, again, reiterate for the board, for the board, what it is that you are proposing at 8284 Marlborough?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. David Midland, representing Carolina Linares, the petitioner. This is Carolina Linares. The petition is requesting variances in a special permit. The property is presently a two-family, two-unit residence on Marlborough Street, and Ms. Linares is looking to go up two stories and make it a four-family residence. The basis for her proposal is the property is very expensive to maintain at this point. It's old. She works very hard to keep it up to code. It's time to renovate the property, and by turning it into, by adding two units, it would make it more feasible to do the renovation.
Okay. You know, there's a number of variances that are needed for this, which we'll go through before we, after we close the public participation portion, but there are nine variances, which to me is a lot, so I just want to make sure that we can, we're prepared to talk about those when it's time.
Well, it's a lot of variances, but at the same time, many of them are fairly small variances. You know, a couple of feet here, a couple of feet there, not to totally minimize the situation. But most importantly, we feel there's no change to the footprint of the house. The setbacks are all already minimal or nonexistent. That's not going to change. The parking area, there's an old garage that'll be torn down, make room for five spaces. While that's still insufficient, quote unquote, under the code, it provides one space per unit plus one additional space. And again, we come to the, kind of, the push-pull of needing more reasonably affordable and nice housing in the community, and parking, lot size, and all of those considerations.
So before I open to the public, just, do we have any questions from the board?
So there aren't any changes from the last time you came before the board? There's no changes. Everything is still the same?
Correct.
And you had mentioned, from what I recall, the first floor and the second floor currently are three-bedroom units there?
Could you, introduce yourself and then...
I'm sorry, the first and second floor are...
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand what you asked me.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Carolina Linares. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So the first and second floor of the property now, they're three-bedroom units currently?
Yes, right now, the units, yes.
Okay. Do you have a picture of the front of the house that you could put up?
Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Point out the house that you're talking about versus...
The house is this one. Right now, what we currently have, we have the first and second floor. We're proposing to go up two more units, using the existing lot lines and everything.
Is there, is there a reason why you want two additional apartments versus one?
The reason why we are proposing two additional units is because we have other properties in the industry that are, by code, it says that we can have the height in that street, and that is the reason why we are proposing that, two more units.
Okay, just because it's allowed by code doesn't mean you necessarily get it by code.
Yes.
And did we get any communication from, like, the abutter, the owner from the, from the house next door? Did we get any notification from that owner by chance?
Did we get anything from the abutter?
No, we see nothing from the abutters, no.
We have heard, though, oh, I have concerns about the height. I just think it's one floor too many, in my opinion. I mean, I just, I just, we heard concerns about the parking, you know, and so, John, if this was, if this was only one additional unit and they had five parking spaces, would they then be need, would that obviate the need for a special permit for parking?
Yes.
So, you know, to me, it seems as though you can put one extra spot on there, which, one extra place on there, and then you would have sufficient parking in the area, which would address the concerns raised by a lot of the people nearby.
Clarify, it would eliminate the need for the special permit for the number of pockets?
That's what I mean, for the number of parking. I mean, so if you, so you continue to have five parking spaces, and then you would meet the parking need, and I think that what the biggest concerns we've heard from, from, from the representative in that area, the council member, is that this, it's hard to park on that street. So if you now put one, only one spot, one floor, you now have enough parking, and that eliminates that question or that concern. What are your thoughts about only having one floor?
I didn't thought about it, to be honest.
Well, I mean, if you want to think about it, and we can do this, you know, if you want to think about it, and we can put this on hold until next month, we'd be happy to do that. But I mean, I'm telling you, I think that I would like, I would like you to think about that, seriously. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to impose something on you that you are not comfortable with, or I also don't want to recommend not approving anything if, in fact, you know, you, you think that you could live with one floor. But I think, you know, if you can live with one floor and you'd have the five parking spots, then I think, you know, the concerns that we've heard become moot. So do you want to think about it? Do you want to think about it and come back next month? Do you, it's up to, it's your choice. I mean, willing, I think I'm willing to say she can think about it and come back next month. I can't speak for the board, but...
I would tend to think I would agree with you. Give it some thought and...
Yeah, I mean, it's, unless you know, if you know the answer already, and if the answer is no, tell us, or if the answer is yes, tell us. And, but if it's, if you really want to think about it, which I, and that, there's no, there's no negative side to you in thinking about it, because you have to decide what makes sense for you as you're preparing your property. But, you know, but we, I would like you to think about it, because I'm not comfortable approving two spots, two, like, two floors now.
Madam Chairman, I don't think you have time to submit this, to go to the next meeting, unless, if you do, if they do, that you submit a letter saying that you will waive the statutory review period. We have a, you have a hundred days, someday of issue to make a decision on the variances.
So we would, we need them to actually submit that letter now?
Yeah.
A handwritten letter that says you would waive the approval period? It's up to you. You think about, you want, you want us to take a short break so you can confirm with your, confer with your lawyer for a couple of minutes? Okay.
Why don't we do that, and if you want to take another case, we'll...
Like, five-minute break?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We'll discuss it and let you know either way.
John, can we let them do that and continue and go on to that? Okay, so we're going to let you do that, and we'll take the next case, because that's a relatively small one. So you guys can confer. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2025-021824 Grandview, may I have a motion to move this to May?
I make a motion to move to May.
Do we have a second, Joan? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. The next case in front of us is two, is three, 200912324 Marginal Street, Enterprise Rent-A-Car Company of Boston, who are here to determine if it's a major or minor request for a modification to allow the introduction of truck rental use, a truck wash bay, the demolition of an existing building, and introducing a fire lane. Could you please introduce yourselves and tell us what you're proposing, so we can figure out if it's major or minor?
I'm Doug Valeri, Enterprise Rent-A-Car.
Okay.
Scott Rogers from J.K. Home Engineering.
Okay.
If you just pick up the microphone...
It's easier, probably. This way it gets picked up, yeah.
So that everybody, including the man in the private room, hears.
The man behind the curtain.
So we are proposing to modify an existing special permit. There was two special permits given back in 2009 and 2011. Those were also modified in 2018. So the request before you tonight is to request that we add truck rental to the facility. In the front, over by Marginal Street, there's a triangular piece of building that'll be removed. That's about approximately 1,500 square feet. And then we are proposing about a 1,600-square-foot addition to the car wash, which is basically a truck wash bay over there in that location. As far as parking goes, over by 324, where that existing building will be removed, we're going to reconfigure that parking area. We'll be adding in spaces for customers, as well as ADA spaces, and we'll be providing some, they call it car-ready spaces, cars that are ready for rental. And then as you travel down southerly towards Marginal Street, there'll be some spaces there. Those are basically cars and trucks that'll be ready for rental. I'm sorry, those are return spaces. And then as you propose, as you travel further south, one, the entrance that's there now, we're going to be removing the existing guard shack and... we're gonna be removing the existing guard shack and relocating that, kind of reconfiguring that area over there. In this area right here, near the car wash, where it says fuel facility, there's an existing ten thousand gallon fuel tank, and we're gonna replace that with a, a new ten thousand gallon fuel tank that'll be split between diesel and regular fuel, so no size change to that specific tank. We did do a fire truck turn plan, and I should note that on this rendering, there's a couple of trucks that show up, that one in particular, there's another one, I think, on this rendering. Those trucks are really too big, they're not the right size. So just to clarify, the kind of trucks that we're looking to rent are basically small box trucks, they're pretty much what you see for a U-Haul rental type thing. Thirty-foot is a small one, I believe thirty-four foot is the, the biggest one they have, but they're not eighteen-wheeler trucks, they're not tractor trailers. There's also a truck turn plan that's a fire truck plan, but that's for the city fire truck. As far as grading and drainage, we are proposing to rebuild the existing trench drain that runs north to south, pretty much down the middle of that larger building, and then we're gonna add a little leg to it that runs westerly, so that'll basically help control some of the runoff in the, the main parking area, if you will. And then that will be, currently that trench drain does not have a discharge point, so we're gonna connect to an existing catch basin that's located near that large green triangular area on Marginal. And then you can see on the, the rendering here, we are doing some, some landscaping, we're gonna be adding some flowering shrubs along the main parking area on, on Marginal Street. We are proposing some street trees as well along Marginal Street. The large triangular area, when I say large, it's not huge, but it's the biggest green space we have, we're adding in some spruce trees, some sp, some pine trees, also some dogwoods and a honey locust in there, and then we're gonna redo the grass area and the mulch and all that. We're also proposing some additional trees along Willow Street, those will be in, basically planters, and that's where we're proposing some additional trees further north. And then along the northern side by the soccer field, we're proposing a, a bunch of rhododendrons in that strip that's existing along there.
Yeah, I don't think we ever complain about adding green space.
I'm sorry?
We don't usually complain about people choosing to add green space.
We have a challenge in that it's an AOL, so it can't dig up parking and pavement areas. It'd be nice if, when that building came down, if we could add some green space there, but because it's an AOL, it's gotta be repaved, so we're trying to get creative with adding green by putting in some planters, so.
So basically, what you're saying is, the biggest thing, and correct me if I'm wrong when I'm here, you're basically adding trucks to what previously, before, there weren't trucks? Before, you were talking about me, like, veh, automobiles.
Correct. We're relocating from one twenty-one Eastern Avenue Chelsea to this location here, so we're just moving our operation right down the street.
And we're not talking semis?
No, no semis, nope. Just same thing as Ryder, Penske, U-Haul, same, same concept. And we're here today.
F-one, F-one-fifties, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, no, we're here today, if you go by one twenty-one Eastern Avenue, you can see the vehicles we ran, we've been there for, I want to say fifteen years now, so.
Okay. Guys, do you have any questions before we open it? Well, we don't, actually, it's not open to the public, it's not public.
So it's a mix of vehicles, both auto and trucks, or just trucks?
So, we, we have car rental there today, and we're adding our truck rental division to that. Eventually, the, where we are today is gonna be developed and we need to find a home, so this would make more sense.
So you're moving, and you're, so you're moving, ultimately, you'll be moving from the earlier, consolidating?
Correct, yes, correct.
How many trucks do you plan on parking there?
We plan on renting them all, that's our goal.
All of them?
So like, if, if they're not sitting, we're not making money, they get moved to different locations, we'll have trucks ready for reservations that come in, but we don't store trucks because we're not making money that way.
Joan?
So this is to determine a major or minor renovation?
Correct.
And from all that he was describing, certainly wasn't minor, but just?
Well, I mean, but what he was describing was really addition, were, were sort of enhancements to what we'd earlier approved, that's what I was saying, that's why, yes, like, adding more green space, moving, he wasn't, he wasn't really making changes from what we approved earlier, other than maybe adding trees or something.
Got it.
Rhododendron.
Got it. So in terms of the few tank replacement, right, was that approved earlier as well?
We had an earlier approval on a ten thousand foot, um, ten thousand gallon tank, and so now there will still continue to be a ten thousand, whatever.
Oh, okay.
So it's not an additional tank, he's replacing the one that's there with a newer tank.
Okay, so during that, oh, sorry.
It's a, it's a split tank, so it's the same gallons that we have before, ten thousand existing, and it'll be a split tank between diesel and regular, so no change to the same.
Got it. So in terms of the replacement, in terms of like the safety mechanisms, I know it was installed once, but do, do they need to ensure that that removal, the fire department?
They would have to go through, they would have to get approval from, you know, from the fire department and all that kind of stuff to do that kind of thing.
Yes, okay. And is there already a wash bay there for the cars?
There is, correct.
Okay, so are you just building out that wash bay to include trucks, or as an additional wash bay?
We're adding addition to that wash bay to include the trucks, right?
Okay.
So to me, that's what seems like the biggest thing, is the addition of that area for?
Yeah.
And adding trucks to the?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks. So, thoughts? I don't think it's mi, major. Do we think it's, do you think it's minor? Marilyn?
Minor.
Joan? I'll agree, do we have a, a motion to consider this a minor mod?
I make a motion, it's minor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And since we have months more, I'm gonna actually continue to take our modifications. And twenty twenty-two oh-one, two forty-four, two forty-eight Arlington Street, sixty-three Sixth Street, La Colaborativa, for a modification to allow the renovation of an existing conference room for use as a limited healthcare and wraparound service clinic. Please come forward, introduce yourself and explain to us what you're proposing.
Sure. Gladys Vega, Presidente of La Collaborativa.
No, get it, oops.
Sorry. Gladys Vega, Presidente of La Collaborativa.
Priya Serene Gupta, physician at Mass General Hospital and medical director for clinical community programs for Mass General Brigham.
You can pick up the?
Yeah, you can pick it up, it's easy.
Pick it up.
Hand it around, it's easier.
It's all easier, Clara.
And Elliot Shanabrook from Mass General Brigham, real estate department.
Okay. So tell us what you're proposing, whether physical changes are proposing and service changes is you're proposing.
So we're proposing to build out an exam room for the program that Priya will describe, which is basically just adding a exam room and?
Internally or externally?
Internally, it's currently a conference room, we would make a small conference room, a small exam room out of the conference room, and a consultation space to talk to people about diet and other things like that. So it's a, it's a pretty minor construction project in the realm of things. Do you have any questions about the construction in the space?
And that's, I mean, as long as it's not an external and you're not, I, I think you'd have to get permits from whatever the appropriate building areas are.
It's all internal, yes.
Yeah, but you're not, you, you're not adding, are you adding cooking facility? You know, we would probably think, no.
No, we're, we're adding one sink to the exam room for the physician to wash their hands, that's about it.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea. So Priya, Priya can describe the nature of the practice.
Yeah, so our program, which is ongoing, is called Bridge to Health, and essentially, it's an innovative collaboration between Mass General Brigham and a community organization, La Collaborativa, who have been our faithful partners for years, and the goal of the, the program is to, to not actually bring clinical care, but preventative services out into the community where people live and work, and so we're doing this to bring to those community members that already have trust with La Collaborativa and are there accessing their other community services, an opportunity for them to engage, let's say, in, in a blood pressure check and other counseling around what they should be eating and things like that. But, you know, a, a, as a physician at MGH, one thing that's really important to us, and it's important to me as the medical director of this program, is that we give people the same sort of privacy of space and that same sort of environment that they would get if they came into fifty-five-foot street or up the street to one of our medical facilities. I also staff the urgent care that's a block and a half away at Chelsea Health Center, but the, the care that we're bringing here, or the ways that we're reaching people here, it's very different than, than like our hospital and our urgent care.
And one of the questions that I have, and this is sort of how it'll play into my thought, is that, is this, are you, you're not going out and, you know, advertising that this is like another urgent care? This is, the people who you currently provide services to will continue, this is a place for them to, you know, I know you've opened this up to provide various services, and this is just another service that will be provided to those who are already members of La Collaborativa?
Exactly, and, you know, of course, because, you know, if I'm there and we see someone's really sick, we will maybe send them in the other direction to the urgent care, or the emergency room, but certainly the idea here is to just really meet people where they are and, you know, give them information about health and a little bit about their health, so that, that they come back and engage with us in our brick and mortar facilities, but you won't?
Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
So basically, what you're saying is that to make sure they're eating the right types of foods and as most of the people in the area, I think, to make them a little more aware of what's available, and especially the younger people, the children and all, so you're trying to help them.
Exactly, and La Collaborativa has things like job skills training for, uh, programs, and sometimes as people are graduating from like a job skills training program and they're going out to get their job, they need, you know, paperwork filled, or they might need a, a shot, so that they can start their job, so it's really to, to really bridge to health, like, bridge that gap, so that they can keep living the life that they've dreamed for themselves and we can be a help.
And it also sort of recognizes that if somebody, you know, who you're serving, you know, maybe getting some jobs, training, services for, know, maybe we should check their blood pressure, and you know they're not gonna go on over to the healthcare because they're busy, but let's go check it here.
Exactly.
So, I mean, that's so, that's sort of a, a wraparound to your existing people that have.
Exactly, and the overarching idea of, of the work that I lead is that, you know, there's so many conditions now in twenty twenty-five, or certain conditions that we're focusing on that are preventable, and so we really want to move the needle on that, because then you really change the trajectory of where that person is going to go with that health condition.
Thoughts? Minor, ma, major?
Minor.
Minor.
I just had some questions.
Of course.
So in regard to, so it's a conference room to turn into like a health screening room?
Joe, Joe, sorry. Thank you, Will.
A conference room turned into a health screening room, but, so is it the setup like a teaching, like, the community can come in and learn about blood pressure and diabetes?
Yeah, so we, there's a door, so like, you know, let's say some community members are, there's a larger space at La Collaborativa, folks are there for different services, then if they want, they can pop into this conference room, and there's, we, we have like a little central area where we might do some group teaching around nutrition or something, and then a private space, we, two private spaces to, to provide, you know, if somebody doesn't, maybe they're embarrassed to talk about like the foods that they're eating and their obesity in front of everybody, and certainly we come up against that when we think about adolescents and youth and things like that, so it's, it's just to, to bring the same, you know, humility and respect that we would bring in any other setting when we're talking about these things.
That's great, but just, so, okay, 'cause my medical brain is working and I respect that, but just to, I respect that it's more preventative and it shouldn't be replaced, 'cause there's so many disparities now in terms of getting optimal care, and would this be staffed by a physician or NP or a person, yeah, a medical person?
So, yeah, certainly not replacing care, we have a health center a block and a half away, that's where the, a healthcare should happen that they provide. Here, I, I'm the medical director overseeing that, because, you know, we as a health institution, if we come into a space, we have to be responsible for, you know, if we screen someone's blood pressure and they're in hypertensive emergency and you don't have somebody there, someone needs to know how to respond to it and get them to the hospital, so from that perspective, but, you know, the other preventative things that we may provide are, like, I mentioned vaccines and things like that, but it's not to replace the care that's already happening, it's not to draw people in from the outside, but really to provide people some services that are already in the space.
Oh, so what would you provide?
Like, someone's coming for a food distribution, we might teach them about, oh, and they have diabetes, we might guide them on what might be good foods that they should be picking up from the food distribution, so that their diabetes stays under control.
Beautiful. And vaccines would be provided as well?
Like, more in the context of, you know, someone's finishing the CHW training program, has gotten a job, we recently, someone through the, our job, like, our collaboration, someone has recently actually gotten a job at the cafe at one of our hospitals, it, you know, we want to enable that person to be able to then show up on the first day of work, so if they, they have gaps in their immunizations, we can help them bridge that gap.
That's great.
More from an empowerment perspective.
I hear you. All right, thank you.
Minor or a major? Minor.
Minor.
So, motion?
I make a motion that it be approved as a minor.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And now we, we will recall eighty-two eighty-four Marlborough Street, case twenty-two oh-five oh-one. And again, I'm gonna read for the record, for special permit and variance, seeking approval for the subdivision of the, of the below referenced property and the construction of a two-family dwelling at eight, no, wrong one. Wrong one. For special permit and variance, seeking approval to establish two additional residential units by constructing a third and fourth floor above the existing residential space, which does not meet the minimum requirement, side yard setback, rear yard setback, usable open space, number of off-street parking, front yard setback, lot size and frontage, as well as a maximum requirement for floor area ratio. So, thank you again for taking the time to go back out, and I'm gonna reopen this, and it's still an open hearing. So I guess before, before I close, I'm gonna actually say, is there any, do we have any questions? Again, before I'm gonna open it up, first I'm gonna open it up to the public, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I'm gonna close the public participation portion of this, and now we will have our discussion. Have you had the chance to converse?
We have, and after some discussion, Ms. Linares would ask the board to grant her an opportunity to amend the petition to seek an addition of one unit rather than two and convert the property into a three-unit building.
And would you like to continue with that now?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so are we willing to, okay. Joe, are we, are you comfortable with that?
Yes.
So then, John, do you have any thoughts before I open it up to the variance details? I, do we have my, you gotta put my variance stuff up there?
No, I'm, I'm just going over to make sure that, what the change, if there were any changes to the list of variances, it, there is a change in that the lot size will now change, but the variance will still be required, it's just a difference in, you know, you're actually increasing the amount of lot size, that per unit that you're providing, but there still will be a deficit.
So I think for the purposes of practicality, let's think about the whole, the variances as a whole, because I think, and as we go through each of the requirements. May, would you please put up the, the list of the requirements? You think I'd know them off the top of my head by now?
I did, now bring it with me, I'm sorry.
So, you know, counselor, I don't have to tell you this, the answer to each of these has to be in the affirmative. And first of all, let me say, we appreciate your going, thinking this through and coming back and re, and rethinking this in a way that I think will make it both positive for you and positive for the neighborhood.
Well, we also appreciate the board's flexibility in allowing the petitioner to do that, and we appreciate the discussion back and forth as well.
And John, and we've clarified that that means that we no longer need the special permit for off-street parking.
Well, the number of off-street parking, yes.
We still will need one for the setbacks for the parking.
Yeah, you still need, yeah, you still need the one for the, the location of the off-street parking, and the, yeah, and the change, but not the number. So the first one is, the variance is sought, or in this case, the variances, are sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Counselor?
Okay, so the building, as we see, sits close to or on the lot lines at the, on the right and the rear, and it's at the street line in the front, as are the abutting properties, by the way. The parking area is to the left, the surrounding area is built up to the extent that no additional land can be acquired in order to meet the lot size, floor area ratio, setbacks and open space requirements, and to add to the open space would require the removal of the parking, which we would not want to do. The positioning of the building and the shape of the lot make it impossible to address any other dimensional anomalies.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Counselor, do you know the square footage of the, of the floor plan?
Of the floor plan? I don't think I have that in these documents. Do you know what the square footage of each floor is?
No. No.
Counselor, what I'm trying to get at is to understand that if you do not build out to those dimensions, are you going to actually have a dwelling that's functional and livable? In order to remove the variances relative to setbacks, you would have to build, you would have to move it back a good 10 feet from the side lot lines. And you'd end up with a dwelling unit that's probably about 10 feet wide.
Right.
So, it's not really feasible to build on top of that building without violating the side yard setback. That's what I'm trying to get at.
He's trying, he's trying to give you another, another quiver.
I understand that.
So, basically, you can't, I mean, you couldn't build anything up there and have anything other than a railroad line?
Right.
Yes, guys, yes, yes. Second?
I'm sorry.
You think I, again, you think I'd know these by heart by now?
Come on.
Well, the next one is financial hardship. Do you think it'll be a financial hardship?
As we discussed previously, the building is in need of extensive renovations to keep it up to code. And in order to do that, the only way for it to be financially feasible at this point would be to totally renovate the existing units and to add to the building to provide additional revenue and economies of scale.
Marilyn? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is always my favorite, this should be the gimme.
It's right in my glasses range where they don't work.
It will be adding housing, which is a good thing.
Exactly. And provide much-needed new housing stock in the city as well as expanding the city's tax base. And the proposal does not change the footprint of the building, and the impact of any additional space requirements will be negligible. Little burden on the city's services and utilities, and there'll be one, or actually, there'll be the required off-street parking spaces for each unit.
Yes.
Yes. And desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Okay. And the project is in the R2 zone, where the intent is to provide housing, including multifamily housing. Project will add, well, one much-needed additional new housing unit as well as two renovated, updated area, units to the area. The area already consists of multifamily housing. As you could see from the photographs, it fits right in with the neighborhood.
Yes. Yeah, then you've met all the requirements. John, what is the planning department's thoughts or recommendations on this?
Well, the planning board recommended approval with the listed conditions. The planning department does not take a stand either way.
No, but, so we have, so are the recommends, though, there are some recommendations that I see here. Do these come, have these been shared with the petitioner?
They have not.
So, here are some of the recommendations that we have between the board and the department. Use permeable pavers or pavement when you're building your parking. Want to give those to them? Each unit, well, the unit is to have, well, we already have parking space, that's irrelevant now. The, and actually, and now the residents of the, and the units are, continue to be, now that they've met the parking, the people are eligible to take part in the parking program, correct? John? Why not?
The zoning ordinance says any relief from parking. It does not limit just to the number.
Oh, well, that's silly. Okay. White roof to prevent, to what?
Urban heat island.
Yeah. What's the, planning and landscape plan to the planning department? And an lighting plan, and a rodent-controlled plan? These are all pretty standard things.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with those?
We discussed the permeable pavers. I know that's a planning board thing. As Ms. Linares was explaining to me, where she is in the business, makes it very difficult to plow a parking area because it tends to chop them up and push them up. I had asked her if it was possible to combine permeable with impervious.
But we've asked people to do this pretty regularly, and they don't seem to raise that concern.
I know. I'm raising it, but I understand.
The only reason I brought it up is because I plow. I drive a plow truck. And I hit those pavers, like with my plow really bad. And then, you see those parking lots, like, especially, I believe a paver is okay in a small area. But if you look at this parking lot, it's a five cars. And to pave that is a pretty good size. And we need to plow it, it's not something that you can do with a snow blower. That's the only concern that I have.
Right, but we just asked the guy before us, who has a much bigger parking lot, to require that. And they said yes. So, I think that...
It's, you know, it's just, from my own experience, that's the only...
Maybe bobcats.
I do have a bobcat, but it is...
Anyway, so that's, thoughts? I mean, that seems to me like that's a requirement, and we will be consistent to make that requirement. I understand your concerns, but it's something that we seem to have been very, it's not an inconsistent request that we have made of applicants in the past. And I assume we will continue to make, particularly in urban areas where the runoff is problematic. Okay. Do we have a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve case number 2025-01-8284 Marlborough Street for a special permit, updated, only one. And the variances, and the conditions as... Along with the conditions as listed.
But it'd be a one, three-bedroom unit upstairs. That's what we approved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Marilyn, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.